All right, we don't have news from, oh, there we go. Hi, councillor. Okay. Councillors, we're going to get the meeting started. Today is the 25th of February and we have our town media here. Thank you, Marie. And we have, in the gallery, we have Mr Johnson that will address us soon. Before we get started, we will call the meeting to order and do a land acknowledgement. The Town of Carston acknowledges that we are located on traditional Black Food Confederacy territory. Councillors, you have an agenda? Are we comfortable with what has been presented here, councillor Burton?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you all in favor. Thank you very much. And we acknowledge that councillor Granger is on Zoom with us. Councillor Johnson, I believe, is on holiday. We have Mr Johnson that will come to the lectern. Please go ahead and talk about the policies we have regarding unsightly premises.
Okay, so this is, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. This is in reference to bylaw 1715. I received a notice some time back regarding my derelict house next door to my place. It's not my primary residence, but it's used for storage. It has some paint that's chipping on it. And I was told, I believe, I believe this came through you, Joshua. Okay. I was told that I needed to fix the paint or I would be facing some tax increases of some sort. To which frankly, I was a little bit surprised. I mean, we're living in a little town here and interjecting raising taxes based on derelict premises seemed a little heavy-handed. It seemed like, my first reaction was, it just seems like, you know, maybe we should use some honey before we start using vinegar. But anyway, so that was my initial reaction. And as I got further into it, if I put paint on that place, and I realized, I was told there was about 300 of these that were sent out to residents and commercial operations, I'm assuming that all happened. But if I put paint on that place, it would be like putting lipstick on a pig. So I went and looked up the costs of doing it and frankly, the place needs to be torn down. That's the, that's the long-term goal for it. But I am not in a position to go and tear it down just now. So I approached Jeff back, a few weeks back, and I said, look, why don't, you know, maybe we can work out a deal here. Because I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it might as well be torn down. And this new policy or bylaw is putting me in a position where I have to go and do something about it. But I'm not prepared to pay for the cost to tear it down. So I asked Jeff, well, what is, you know, is there a possibility we can work something out here? I mean, the town's got burning loaders, it's got dump trucks, it's got all this other stuff. You know, show up to my house on a Saturday and we'll work this thing out and down she goes, no problem. And so that's kind of where I left it with Jeff. And, you know, I asked him if I should come talk to the council about it and he said, no, no, let me just, let me go ahead and work through and see what we can do. So anyway, here I am because apparently the committee met on this a while back, I don't know exactly when, but per whoever's on that committee met and decided that, at least Joshua told me this, that you were fixed on making any allowances for exemptions or changing the timeframe, that you were fixed on sending me a fine or an uptick in my taxes regardless of the situation. And I thought, well, it seems okay. I realized, you know, you're anxious to go and clean up the town and get it all fixed up and everything, but I just felt like that, you know, that didn't leave me a whole lot of recourse. What I was really hoping for is that if it needs to be torn down, is that the town will work with me on it. And I will be happy to go ahead and pay whatever the costs of the town turn it down for me through my taxes over whatever period of time is reasonable. Okay? I'm okay with that. That's fine. The job will get done. You'll be happy that there's no more chip paint on the house next door and I'll feel like, okay, I got a hole in the ground over there, I got to do something with. But at least it's not becoming an eyesore for the neighborhood. I mean, we have enough of that up and down Main Street, you know? That's, you know, the impression people get of this town is on Main Street, not five blocks away from Main Street, at least in my opinion. But, so I just feel like I would like to work with the town on fixing my place next door. And I don't really want to have to have my taxes raised as an incentive for me to go and do something about it. I, I'm not willing to go and throw, you know, $500 of paint on it and then do that, you know? It will hardly hold paint the way it is right now. It's OSB that's really degraded and it's, it's just going to be a mess. And I'm not really into just doing that just to satisfy the bylaw. So there's my opening statement.
Okay. David, thank you very much for coming and plead your case. You gave us some thoughts, different thoughts than your letter. So thank you for that. We will discuss that in a further meeting next week. No, in two weeks' time, sorry. So that's normally, we always defer it to the next meeting. So thank you for giving us some thoughts and we mean note of it.
So this question actually is not to you, councillor Burton. So I'm guessing this was your committee, the, okay, so what committee was it then?
Council committee.
Oh, okay.
CCW.
Okay, CCW. Because I was thinking it was the, okay, it's not. That's what I needed to know.
All right. So thank you very much.
Do I ask David one question? So some of the other landowners who have got notices, one of the options for them is to sell it to somebody else who will knock it down or do whatever they're going to do with it? Does that fit in your plan at all or?
No.
Okay.
Like, I mean, some paint on, that's missing on a, on a structure that I bought in the first place is an investment, doesn't make sense for me to turn around and sell it to someone else so that they can tear it down. But I appreciate you asking the question. No, I'm not interested in selling it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more. So this is administration question. So out of the, what did you say, 440? How many letters did we send out?
That probably got confused with Leor's letters.
Okay.
So for this effort.
Yes.
Thirty to forty, maybe.
So out of the 30 to 40 letters, are we only hearing back from one person that is struggling with it? Like, have we had a whole bunch of emails?
I've talked to two to three other people last year.
Last year? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as far as when you're meeting and convening on this again, do I need to be here for that or is this you're going to talk about it on your own or what? You know, I mean, if you're going to talk about it in the open here, I'd like to be sitting in the audience, so.
It's a public meeting.
Okay. So it'll be in two weeks, you said?
Yep.
I should give you an email.
Okay.
Yeah, those are public meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The next meeting will be in a closed session. All right, we have minutes that need to be adopted, it's the minutes of February 11th. Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2025 council meeting.
Thank you all in favor? Thank you very much. The Haddock Library Committee Terms of Reference, if you remember, we asked administration to kind of revise the wording of it and they've done that quite well, I believe. Are we comfortable in having that approved?
You looking for a motion?
Yeah, I think it would be best if we do the, do it this way.
I make a motion that we accept the Library Operations Haddock Committee as is outlined.
Terms of reference.
Terms of reference, thank you.
If we're making it official, I would just put a curl after Jim and Mary before Library.
Yeah, you're right.
Getting informal, we're just first names now.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will adopt those terms of reference. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, I had one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. So it has that our dissolution date is in, at the end of the year, which is past the election. And that would mean that we have to change horses midstream.
Oh, you don't want to do that.
Good point, councillor. My, like, long before the election. That's my feeling on it. I think we just arbitrarily picked the end of the year, but I think two or three meetings and this is.
I really hope that it would be done pretty quickly.
This is wrapped up. I'd like to see it by June or July, probably wrapped up.
Yeah, I think it would be a good thing. Thank you so much. The land sale resolution, now this one is something interesting. Jeff, you may want to talk about that industrial land and the price we had put on the lot at that time.
Yes, so in 2016, I think it was, yeah. In 2016, there was a motion and we were able to sell a few of the lots up there. That was recovering our utility and road installation costs. So we've been working with Old Man River. We got a new subdivision for the area, which is contemplating potentially the spot, potentially for the hospital if that goes. It opened up, we had some interest in another lot next to the Schaefer lot down what is Second Avenue, I believe. And so it takes that in, where the solar farm is and all that stuff. We've cleaned that up. And so what Brandon, I was having him look at it and he is saying, based on the elevations in that area, to extend utilities further around the corner and going south, it's going to get quite expensive quite quickly. And the price we have per acre is not going to cover the cost for utility extensions. So what I was looking for tonight is we want to come, well, you, and you saw in the RFD, I'm asking for administration to be directed to come back to you with this. We'd like to have a little closer look at this and determine what is the more suitable amount for what's left. There's also some discussion that needs to happen about, you know, what, what we want to try and open up. And we'll talk a little bit more about industrial land tonight in the closed session too. But for tonight, I'd like to be able to get that motion off the table so we can reevaluate those costs because it's looking extraordinarily expensive to come and service the far south lots right now.
Right. Okay, so we need a motion. Councillor Brown?
I make a resolution of council to rescind motion 16-233.
Are we okay with that? Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
And one more motion, mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't want me to finish?
Sure, go ahead.
Also request from administration, a further motion to direct administration to bring back proposed servicing costs and sale prices of remaining land in the West Industrial Area for council review.
Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
So Jeff, do we need to determine the costs of servicing?
Yeah, particularly when we, once we turn south.
We would only do that after a sale, wouldn't we? There was, I'm just wondering if we're, do it just because we're anticipating sales?
Yeah, there is.
Because it's always a moving target, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we waited until we had an offer that we could say, plus costs, which we estimate to be, because we could be back here in another year and those numbers have changed again, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it could. You're right. We just know that it's got to be different than it is today.
Right.
And I think we can get some decent, well, we need to look at the viability of even servicing the further south ones at all because we have to come all the way from 10th Street. So that's going to be quite a, quite a trek. So I, I get your point. Why don't we compile a few things just to see how far off we are from the current numbers and then we can, we can make some, have some of that discussion at the time.
Councillor Granger?
Also, Jeff, industrial land usually requires higher fire flow and it's not just the distance you've got to come, it's the diameter of the pipes.
Sure.
And hopefully they're, they're looking at that because, you know, six, eight inch probably won't do, you're probably looking at 10 inch. But I don't know that for sure, but just industrial land, the buildings require more fire flows.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the table. All in favor? Thank you very much. So administration will gather some information regarding the cost. The next one, Jeff, it's an interesting one. I'm sure councillor Court will be jumping up in the air for this one, but.
If I may, I know two things already. The bridge will be pretty close to what's popping and the end will be right at McDonald's, so.
Think he got it covered there.
I thought that would make you happy, councillor.
That wasn't the intent, but I get it. Yeah, I do.
Near the pub shop.
The councillor Court's on the trail.
Well, you know what? You have no trouble finding the good places.
Ride my bike down there.
All right, seriously now, we need to kind of talk about this one because it's a little bit like the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart. Not true.
Yeah. So if I might, councillor, the mayor is right. This was an opportunity that came along that we weren't aware was coming. And so Jill got looking into this, saying, you know, it may fund a huge percentage of kind of massive expansion of the trail system, bridge systems, anything to do with walking. The biggest, the elephant in the room is what do we do about the matching portion? Of course, that's the big issue because we're looking at a million dollar grant application with a 60-40 split. So the question is, where does the $400,000 come from? And I don't have a concrete answer for you on that tonight, except to say that if we can't come up with the matching, we simply don't take the grant if we're successful. Right? It's not like they're going to force us to take the grant. The other thing I want to be able to show you soon is, these drawings were really preliminary. Brandon's gone last week and this week, and so we had to really do Google Maps and a pen and, and make it work. We didn't have his professional touch to the drawing, but hopefully it got the point across.
Well, I think it did.
But I, I do want to mention, one of the things that is a bright spot in this is in your five-year capital plan, there's $50,000 a year for trail expansion. And we would actually have until 2030 to do the project in full. So there's, you know, $250,000 already in capital matching component within the five-year capital budget. So we're not a far stretch, depending on how much of this, if it gets approved at all, again, big caveat, if it gets approved.
Councillor Brown?
So I'm all for this. I think grants don't come across very often and to have one like this, I think we would, I don't want to say fools, but I think it's incredibly, and like you said, we have till 2030 in order to have it finished. I, I think this is a no-brainer.
Questions? Councillor Burton?
I agree. And if we do have to prioritize the bridge, would be a bigger one-time outlay that grants would really help with. Whereas the trail, we can do incrementally. We get to decide how much.
Sure.
How many meters we want to do, but the bridge is an all or nothing. So that would be a real focus, I think.
Good point.
Councillor Court?
So are you talking two bridges now? One on, on the 501 and this one?
Correct.
And it'll come across that Main Street, cross the street by the hotel and on that, okay, and behind A&W there. There's room for that, all that stuff in there, if I'm looking at this correctly.
I'm kind of, just one second here.
Yes, that's what it says.
Yep, yep, so that's.
There'd be room in there then.
Down by the fire hall, then turning over the bridge and then down towards Nofells or Redford Park essentially.
So you got A&W halfway down, then you go.
It's the perfect.
Yeah, you can.
It's all downhill.
It's all downhill.
Until it's not.
You can replenish on the way. Councillor Kenley, you are on the board of ForEx. Are you willing to do a resolution?
I'm trying to open this all up right here, trying to get it open.
I'm so sorry that your computer is sleepy today.
I read it, I looked at it before I got here and for some reason it's not working now, but yeah, I think it's a great idea and.
Okay.
Yeah.
You want to put your motion to?
The motion here, councillor?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes, I do. I think I got, I'm almost there. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to submit an application. Oh, wow, that is what was requested. Okay, so to support the submission of an application to the Act of Transportation Fund for the Lee Creek Nature Trail Project.
Thank you.
We know when this application goes in, when it'll be here about.
So it's due tomorrow. So no pressure, but yeah, the reason we are really trying to fast-track this is it was a very short turnaround.
Okay.
And it has to be submitted tomorrow by end of day. And we don't know adjudication timeline, but it's, it's a very short turnaround for the grant, so.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you and let us hope that we get that money.
Kidding.
The committee and other report, we have the CEO report. Jeff is quite busy. It's, has not been a very slow time for him.
Bit of a sparse report this morning.
Just a matter of interest, those that might be interested in going, Alberta Southwest, I believe, is going to have their AGM, we're hoping at the Remington Centre. That's the plan right now.
Well, right.
So fifth, first, I think, the 5th of June, the first Wednesday anyhow.
In June?
Yes. And any reason, any councillor is invited to it, so. So that's exciting, so we don't have to travel too far.
You may want to know.
The 4th, I guess, no, 4th of June, sorry.
You may want to know who is going, so you get them a few numbers.
Well, I will find out next week if this is going to go here or not.
Yeah, right.
We have a meeting next Wednesday and I'm sure she's, she's been in contact with Remington and it seems to fit, so.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we have a certain amount of reports.
Mayor, councillor Granger asked me to report on a couple of things.
Oh, yes, you're right. Thank you.
So I apologize, councillor Granger sent a text just before the meeting, so I will try and hit all the points, councillor Granger.
Okay.
So bear with me, I'm pulling your text up here. Okay. Spending a lot of time this week on the wastewater plant. Tomorrow at 11:30 is the presentation to Emissions Reductions Alberta. And so that's our $5 million grant. Right now for the presentation, I'm the one doing the presentation, we have 55 minutes with their board. I also have representatives from, I have two people, well, I don't even have to guess, by the way. I have my presentation right here because I'm nervous and reading it all the time. I have Adam and Ronnie from Associated Engineering attending with me to, so I can refer the technical questions to them. I have Arash Mazoffery, who is from Oxymom in the UK, so he will be the representative for the technology that we're trying to help commercialize in Western Canada. And I have Kim Welby, who's been helping with the grants, and I have Peter Cassarella from Southgrew, supporting the opportunity for economic development. That's our team. The mayor will also be on the meeting as well. They asked me to keep it concise from every party, but they definitely wanted us to have some other people there. So that is tomorrow at 11:30 on the nose. I've got three meetings between now and then, just to shore up our presentation. We're meeting with this whole group virtually, so we know what questions go to who, and they've told us to make sure we really have that sorted out. So part of having that prepared was, and it's, and I apologize, councillor, I haven't had a really close look at this, but I did meet with Associated again this morning on a couple of things. So they will be on site for the, the bulk of next week. So they've done design for the most part and how that's going to play. Now they need to come on site and actually make sure that everything they've measured will fit how they've measured and they think it'll go. Geotechnical on the site is done. We are starting to order some of the long lead time components, so electrical components and the membrane components. So we're just preparing the tendering documents for getting those rolling now. So in really, really small font, essentially, so MABR equipment pre-procurement starts this, probably next week. And then they've got, like, this goes on for quite some time, but so 30% design, they call it, that's pretty much done. So that's what we submit to, like, for our insurance, we submit 30% design for the project insurance, we submit it to the grant people. This is a milestone they all want to see. And they're still, again, we met this morning and they've, they've looked at moving some of the headworks into the old pits where the RBCs are now to free up floor space. So they're still really working and grappling with how this all fits in an old building and how we make it work in an old building. I think I mentioned before, the secondary treatment is now planned to come outside the building, onto the south side, and then back into the building into the clarifiers. So what that did, as we think anyway, we'll see, is we were looking at going with the C-Mar Construction Management Risk procurement. By bringing those secondary treatment pits outside, that de-risked the project enough that we can go back to traditional design bid build and we think that'll help get costs down. So they think it's going to de-risk the project almost $1 million.
Wow.
By eliminating that risk for the contractor and then factoring that in their price. So we continue to work on that quite a lot. So, you know, this, this grant tomorrow is, well, it's, it's a big deal. I mean, it, it makes a huge difference in how much we have to borrow in the end for this and what our annual debt servicing costs will be. Makes a huge impact on that. I had a chance to meet two different occasions with FCM when I was at their conference last week. It, it brought up a couple of questions in our application, so we have the other grant with FCM and the loan application. So we were able to clarify, I was able to clarify a couple of things with them. Associated sent FCM some new information this morning as well, so they seem to continue to be working on that project, so I'm encouraged about that. And I keep in touch with transportation with our 51%, just to make sure that there's no surprises and that they're not too worried. So Cindy and I correspond quite a bit with progress and what's going on and what's the next step and, and all those things. So, yeah, I mean, after tomorrow, I'll be very grateful to have it over with. I don't know why this one has me really nervous for some reason. Maybe it's because it's virtual and it's really important and virtual, so you start worrying about all these other things too.
Councillor Kenley?
I was going to ask, did they give you a timeframe on?
First week of April. Yeah, on both the FCM and with this one, we should know by the first week of April on both of them. So just so you know, the, basically the gist of the presentation tomorrow, and the mayor will, will hear it, but ERA, Emissions Reduction Alberta exists to commercialize technologies that reduce greenhouse emissions in Alberta. We are not a, no, we are an unconventional applicant at best. So we're a municipality doing one project. We don't intend to commercialize this technology. So our pitch to ERA, and they feel it's a strong one, by the way, our pitch to them tomorrow is, we, with their money to help de-risk this a little bit for us, it allows us to investigate and, and research and, and, and find the cost to research this new technology in Western Canada. This is the, what closes the gap to rapid commercialization. So in municipalities, we want to see one that works. We're not really wanting to be the pioneer here because what if it, there's, it's too capital intensive to risk something that doesn't work. And so we're saying, because of the situation we're in in the community, we had some of our own money to do additional engineering in order to really see this through. And we're at the point now that if we can do a successful project, Oxymom has already established dealers to distribute in Alberta and they're ready to commercialize immediately. And so our pitch to them is, we will be the one that closes the gap to rapid commercialization.
That's right.
So that's what we're trying to sell them is that, you know, just, just the reduction in our facility alone, and this is a small facility, of all the facilities that'll, that'll integrate MABR, we're projecting energy consumption of 65% less, saving 485 megawatt hours annually, 50% less sludge production, reduced disposal costs. fifty percent less sludge production, reduced disposal costs. And it's scalable, so we don't have to buy the membrane for the whole capacity of the, of the project now. We just buy what our population requires, what our treatment needs for now. But, um, from the greenhouse gas point of view, we had to have a third party actually as part of this process. They had to come in and, and analyze our, uh, assessments to make sure it was accurate for E R A. And so they agree that this is projected to reduce four hundred and twenty-three tons of C O two equivalent annually. Um, just in, in doing this, and so when you, let's say you can scale that to a Red Deer Medicine Hat, Lethbridge Calgary type of facility. So it scales very well. It tells the story of scalability very well. And that's what we're leaning on heavily tomorrow, because they don't, they don't get municipal applicants for the grant. It's, it's a very odd way to look at it.
Well, uh, we wish you all the best. I'll be there to be a total support to you, because I think there is merit in that application. And if we ever were to get it, we telling a wonderful story for Canada, really. Counselor Granger, go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm, I'm the other way. I think this is a win-win-win. I got a lot of confidence in you and your ability to convince people and explain things, because I've seen it in action. I've got confidence in, in, in Associated Engineering. I've got confidence in the technology. I was behind this right from the get-go, even though, you know, we're one of the first. So I think you're gonna do well, Jeff, and, uh, don't look back, look forward.
Well, I have a hard twenty-minute cap, so I'll be pacing the floor tonight, reading this out loud to see where it lands. I can tell you that.
That's fine, I know you will.
Yeah, they said, "Don't go over, we will cut you off." And I'm like, "Okay, fair enough."
Who could say no to this?
Don't sleep in tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just might, a couple other things, um, so Golf Clubhouse. So we know we've done a letter of intent with the Smiths for the restaurant. They are meeting with Crown Equipment in Lethbridge. Crown Equipment is to meet with Southwest Construction and Ian Moxon, so that they can specify the electrical and H VAC and plumbing needs for the equipment that Crown is specifying for the kitchen. So, as of right now, that was like ten days ago, when I know Mister Smith, when Dave met with Crown. So I still, I need some follow-up on how that's flowed through and how that's going. Um, so that's the last part of the design, is getting mostly the electrical sorted out.
What about Main Street, Jeff?
Okay, hold on a second, hold on a second.
So we're still planning on getting going to Springan?
Yep, yep, that's still the plan. Um, I asked Dale, time is flying, it was mid-last week sometime. I just sent him an email and said, "Look, I would accept that if they just wanted to make some assumptions on the electrical in the kitchen and get it out to tender, we would have to budget some contingencies for change orders if we assumed wrong."
Yeah.
So I said, "I just wanna see this thing get out to tender, so we know what our number is."
Right, exactly.
We don't have a hard number right now. And so I said, "I'd be willing to work on a change order basis if we could just get the thing out to tender sooner than later."
Counselor Court's going to be there with his hard hat and his golden shovel.
Yeah, that's right.
Whether, whether anybody else is there or not.
Hold on a second. Counselor Granger?
Yeah, just, uh, uh, something on Main Street. Jeff, where's that at?
Hi, I'm gonna shoot from the hip a little bit on this, because I'm trying to remember the dates. Uh, Daryl emailed me two weeks ago and told me he was going to have a design for council review, like in a week or two, so I'm expecting that any day. And I'm sorry, I, I can't, I just don't remember the exact dates, but it was roughly right about then, and I should have something any day.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else that you want from, uh, our C O? No? Okay. Anything that, uh, you want to discuss regarding reports? The budget to actual, we're doing fine. C P O report. You can see Leo is busy. Counselor Granger?
Yeah, quick, uh, on the, uh, budget actual to, uh, final, uh, or projected numbers. How did we do at the end of the year, Jeff? And can you comment on twenty twenty-four, just while we're talking about budget numbers?
I can. I don't know if I'll comment accurately, but I'm happy to comment. So that's just wrapping up right now. So the auditors have been here, they've done their work, Hawkins just getting stuff, so you'll probably have an audit presentation
Pretty soon.
in the next couple of meetings, actually, yeah, so we'll, we'll have something pretty soon. I think the end of this year is gonna be a little leaner than we've seen in the past. We had a couple overruns, like on the riprap on the creek and a couple other projects, we had some overruns. I think we're fine, uh, that's why we moved ahead, but, um, we should know that really soon, Counselor. We should have good numbers.
It's not looking bad, though, you're saying?
I'm not, I'm not worried, no. We're okay.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
Alright. Anything regarding the C P O report? No? Okay. Questions?
Excited. Things are getting done.
Good. Under, uh, the question I would have, actually, regarding the sewer plant, would be if, at one point or another, we could try to understand what does that mean for all electrical, the solar farm, that is, uh, doing, doing, uh, I mean, all our buildings are being served by that solar farm.
So are you asking what?
The reduction, the reduction, what happened then with the...
Yeah, we just have, we have additional surplus on the solar farm.
So what happened to that surplus?
Well, that'll be for you to decide.
Yep.
Well, I guess the next council, it might be for one or two of you to decide, I don't know for sure, but...
Next council.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll be able to have great discussions about what to do with the surplus when we reduce that consumption, for sure.
No, I just was thinking about that as you were talking about that reduction. Okay, sounds good. Do, do you want to talk about that Tabor in the correspondence? The town at Tabor, if you remember, we had partnered with them with a program for, to get immigrants and to be able to satisfy the need of manpower in our town, which has been successful for us. But there is a glitch now.
So you'll remember, we talked about this at budget just in December, because we weren't sure how this was gonna look going forward, and I appreciate, um, I believe it's Amy, um, Alred. And she got ahold of me before all this came out. There was actually some news on it, just saying, look...
There was, I read the news on it, actually.
There's been a lot of changes at the provincial and federal level relative to immigration policy. Um, the program that was funding them is due to end in March. Um, there's this massive backlog within the program. We did have, I think, four businesses who were, who successfully were able to find employees through the program in a year and a half or so that we were involved. Um, but Tabor has decided that they are no longer going to run the program, which there was about five or six of us that were, we were working with them, uh, to run that. So, uh, my position is, is that we, we do the same as Tabor here, and we let this go until we understand what the need in the community is, for one, and two, what immigration policy looks like over the next couple of years. Because it might be substantially different, I don't know. And so I think, I think they're wise in their decision, and I would suggest that we, we do the same and thank them for their, their time and, and call it a program.
Yeah, maybe we'll send them a letter or something. Maybe you want to talk about nine C, about the story about the Jupa update? We are not going to go for a delayed or an extension with the, uh, school board. The intent is to carry on with the timeframe that we had originally?
Yeah, my preliminary discussion, I haven't talked to all the parties, but I just think everyone's at a point that we're so close, why would we wait? Let's just get them done and put it out of the way. I don't, I don't see any reason. I haven't got, um, thorough feedback from the Francophone School yet. Uh, I'll, I'll actually touch base with Stefan soon. Um, but I don't see why we would simply wait for the deadline on this. We're all engaged with it right now. We've all been talking about it recently. I think it's just, just as beneficial to get it done.
Right. And the next one for Kevin Phillips. We understand that Kevin has served us for a long time with our electrical, uh, department. But right now, we might be going a different ways.
That's so Kevin has hit the point where he's lucky and can retire. And so Kevin's great. I'm hoping to meet with him, uh, first week in March or so. Pinoka, C O and I are gonna take him to lunch, um, and kinda talk about what the next steps are. But he is done with us, uh, at the end of this month, which is only three days away. Uh, so we've known this for some time. Kevin and I, everything's good. He just is at a point that he can retire from the business, and so, good for him. So we've started putting together an inventory of all of the things that he does for us on a whatever frequency, weekly, monthly, semi, annually. And we're going to go out and meet with some others that have the capacity to help us in that same way. And so Pinoka and I, uh, Sandra from Pinoka and I have already talked, and we're going to team up and put a proposal together for other consultants in that space and see what we can get. He answered my question.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Burton?
So Jeff, just jumping back to that joint use and planning agreement. In that process, we don't have to identify parcels. We're dealing more generally with the relationship and who does what, rather than actually doing it, right?
Yeah, the agreement doesn't have to have anything identified in it. It essentially says that we're going to agree to start putting school reserve aside if we take cash in lieu, and that we will assist in finding properties when the school needs to the, to, uh, to the extent of our capacity to do so.
So, so our planner and, and I and others who are looking at that, we don't have to do that first in any way.
No.
No.
In fact, it might be better to have that done first, then we know where we're headed.
Yeah. So in our, in our case, we're almost all the time, we take cash in lieu instead of land. It's really a commitment from all the region, all the Westwind communities to say, "Yes, we're all gonna start putting some aside." And, and again, for us, the Francophone School, uh, we're unique in our community in Westwind.
Can you tell us, did they agree with the Jupa that...
So I don't have their feedback on it yet?
Not yet.
No.
Okay.
No.
Alright. Thank you.
I'm not concerned, Mayor, by the way. We've had good verbal discussion about it, I just don't, I don't have formal feedback yet.
Right. Alright. There is nothing else on this agenda for the public meeting. So we will conclude the public meeting at this point, and we will, do you need to take a break for a few minutes?
Five minutes?
Okay.
Well, our, yeah, so five, five minutes. I make a motion to, for a five-minute break.
Thank you. All in, all in favor? Thank you, thank you, Mary. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
...
Okay, so the exact wording on that is?
Good question. I think it would just be to approve Mary Lou Nichols as the library manager. I think it's fine.
I'll make that motion. Oh, you want to do it?
I'm already... I make a motion to approve the new Kirkston Jim and Mary Curl Library...
Manager.
...manager? Manager is Mary Lou Nichols.
All in favor? Thank you. Now, we need to approve the two board members. The two, uh...
Yeah, I would make a motion that we include or approve Jared and the mayor as part of the Anok Committee at the meeting with the library.
I agree.
Oh, sorry, counselor.
Oh!
I'm not your student anymore, Tim.
Oh, wow!
All in favor? Wow!
I'm just... I still hate Chinese students.
Thank you. And you know, know something. I appreciate all of you who sit on committee. It's not easy at all. And sometime you get rubbed the wrong way...
Sometimes.
...for no reason at all, except for you trying to do your very best and to present your own perspective. And sometime the boards don't like you. Some like you, some don't like you.
We need a motion to be done?
Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All righty.
All in favor? Thank you.
So I'm not here next week.
That's my first...